The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the robe.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Coulter, Alderman Conway, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Valmer, Alderwoman Martin, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderwoman Boyd, President Reed.
Here.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Conway, Alderwoman Martin, Alderwoman Howard, Alderman Rhodey, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn. Twenty present.
Quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Pastor R.R. Jordan from Christ First Church.
Let us pray. Most gracious and merciful heavenly Father, I thank you right now, God, for your people who are gathered here today. You said in your word, "With all thy getting get an understanding." I pray right now, God, that your people would have an understanding, that you would give us wisdom, that you would give us knowledge, that we may be able to lead your people. I pray for each and every politician, every alderman. I pray that you would give them wisdom right now, in the mighty name of Jesus. I pray that you would guide their steps, that you would order their direction, that your word would be a lamp unto their feet. I thank you, God, that you are giving them insight, that you are giving them a discerning spirit. I honor you right now for this great work that you will do through them. I pray that you would enlarge capacities, that you would enlarge territories right now as you lead and guide them by your spirit. You said, "It's not by power nor by might, but by your spirit." And so, we thank you right now, and we trust you, oh God, that through your people, that we will create change in the city of St. Louis. I pray right now that the murder rate would decrease, God, and that you would use the people that are in this room, oh God, to create change, to effectuate change that is long-lasting, that it will reach our communities and calls us to see you as you are. You are Lord, you are our God, and you are our Savior. We thank you right now for everything that you're doing through us. In Jesus' mighty name we pray, amen.
Let's give the pastor a big round of applause. Pastor Jordan is being escorted by his friend and partner Cedric Cobb. Let's give Cedric a big round of applause, too. These two young men are doing great business in the city, and I know, I for one appreciate the business that they do and the role models and leadership that they're showing. We have, or spend with our regular business, take up our courtesy resolution counter, Alderwoman from the 19th.
President and members of the board, I move that we adopt our courtesy resolution agenda for today.
It's been moved by Alderwoman from the 19th, seconded by Alderman from the 22nd. Alderwoman from the 19th, do you have some special guests you'd like to introduce today?
Yes.
Would you like to come up to the dais?
All right, thank you. Good morning. On behalf of our great city of St. Louis and Board of Aldermen, it has been the occasion that we recognize women of excellence, women who have achieved above and beyond, women who have volunteered and given their all, women who know what it means to sacrifice for others, always remembering those who have less, always remembering to be inclusive, and also providing a support system with their professionalism in trade, whether it's a songstress, an actor, actress, and many other positions. So, on this day, June 9th, the Urban League will be having their Salute to Women of Excellence Gala downtown at the Marriott Hotel. We will honor 14 women. We will give a special honor of lifetime achievement to two women who are standing here on our dais. It is so exciting to have these opportunities for our people to see close and personal relationships that we have been grown over the years, people who have given many, 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 many times. I can't even say enough. So, what I'd like to do is to introduce to you the most magnificent. And I tell you, when you talk about having talent, it is above and beyond. You see, some of you all don't know what real music is. I'm gonna talk to the grown folks. So, we're gonna talk about grown folks stuff. You see, this young lady, as beautiful as she is, has been an inspiration for many young people. My son called me this morning and reminded me. He said, "Mom, you remember, in my early days, I was in a video with Miss Frida Payne." I had forgotten, but he remembered. And so, I present to you the honorable Frida Payne. She shall be honorable today. It's not like you just stand here and I'm gonna bring up Yolanda, okay? Our other lifetime achievement awardee for tonight, you know, when she first came on the scene, you know how people say, "She'll only be around for a minute," but she proved them wrong. She proved to them that I can not only cannot sing you to your feet and make you shout, but I can show you what it means to bring gospel music and its attendance to a different level in this industry. But she's also a passionate, passionate young woman. She has been here and done inspirational workshops in St. Louis with women over the years. She's done a number of things. So, I'd like to present to you, and she shall be honorable today, When we talk about how we are appreciative, this is what it means, and tonight you shall be treated like queens. We will make sure that all of you, our lifetime achievers and our other awardees, will know that we appreciate what you do on behalf of the city of St. Louis. And as we shall keep our tradition, there is none other that can say to us today some words of wisdom. We are in trying times in our country and in our world, but she's seen much, she's done many. And so, I'd like to ask, and she is always honorable in my sight, Ms. Clayton, will you please come forward?
Thank you. It's a great honor for me to be here with you wonderful people today, and especially to join with these honorees tonight. But as you know, I have been in the trenches trying to do what you have pictured here today together, blacks and whites together. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., I was thrown out of a restaurant in a hotel in 1965. The reason the hotel manager threw us out is because Dr. King brought into the hotel blacks and whites together to meet, to decide, to eat. And the manager told us, and to Dr. King to his face, "We don't want you here because we don't like the fact that you're bringing blacks and whites together." He said, "But I hope I didn't insult you." Dr. King said, "You didn't. You have stimulated me and infused in me an enthusiasm to go out now and fight for the right of every black person and white person to sit, eat, discuss, decide together, wherever they are in a public place." So, as I look at you today, and I've been here several times, and thank you so much for this great honor to bring our honorees before this august body. But I know that you're sitting here with seriousness on your mind, making serious decisions about people's lives, and you're doing it together. So, it warms my heart to see the chair preside this young woman absolutely making us feel stimulated by this presentation, and to know that you're here taking care of business of St. Louis in a very dignified, productive way. I thank you for this privilege and this honor, and I want you to join in congratulating all these people who are gonna be honored tonight. Thank you very much.
So, we of course want to be respectful and allow our lifetime achievement awardees to have a moment to speak to us. First, we'll go with, we'll go with Miss Frida Payne.
First of all, I am so extremely honored to be here, to be honored, to be appreciated. I never realized that after all these years of being in the entertainment industry that one day I would be able to be receiving a lifetime achievement award. But I guess it's, I guess it's about that time to smell the roses, you know, before you can't smell them anymore. And this is indeed a pleasure, a privilege, and tonight will be such an auspicious occasion for us to really shine and to show our appreciation that we love you, you love us, and we love you back. So, all I have to say is, it's just my pleasure, and I am humbled.
Ms. Adams, I have to tell my president over here. He said, "Speak a few words or sing a few words."
It will be speaking today, thank you. Good morning. I am very humbled to be here in your presence. I, I like to think of myself as a St. Louisian. Every now and then, I've been coming since I was a teenager, singing and working with different groups. And I, I understand service. I understand that what you do is very, very important, and I won't be long before you. But I wanna just say thank you for allowing us to be here today. I wanna thank Alderwoman Davis for the ability to even speak to you all. As I watched certain things happen in the Missouri area and how you all had to galvanize yourselves together, as Dr. Clayton said, to make significant changes and impacts on this city, you have a hard job. And if you don't wake up grateful every morning for the job that you have to represent the people that you do, it's for nothing. So, I am grateful that you all have decided today to give us this small moment of appreciation. But I turn it around to you because I know it's a thankless job sometimes, and I just wanna say personally, thank you for the citizens of St. Louis, the citizens of Missouri, and the citizens of the United States because what you're doing here today will impact for generations, and I hope you understand how grateful we are to you all, too.
Tell you, I am so honored to have an opportunity to address a couple of the awardees this morning. You know, the resolutions that you will be given later this evening from the Board of Aldermen, they are the highest honor the Board has to give any organization or individual. And it's an official act of the Board, where we take it up on the floor and we pass it on the floor. And we commit it to the permanent records of our city. So, 100, 200 years from now, when you research the records of the city of St. Louis, you will read about Ms. Adams and Ms. Payne, and their many contributions on behalf of people all across the United States of America, and the benefits that the residents of the city of St. Louis received from that. And I am so honored, as a father of four with two daughters, to see two strong women doing great things, not just in the city of St. Louis, but across this country. We cannot have enough role models. So, I wanna thank them for being good role models for young women and men to follow all across the United States. And let's stand and give them a big round of applause along with Dr. Clayton and the other awardees Yes. Any aldermen and alderwomen that would like to join the awardees for a picture, please line up on this side of the dais so that we can get, because they have a real tight schedule. Alderman from the 22nd, while the alderman from the 22nd is making his comments, make your way up if you would like to join us in a picture. Alderman from the 22nd.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to say congratulations to all the honorees, and I would like to move that the resolutions for all honorees be in bank.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 22nd, seconded by Alderman from 12th. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please create new copies of those resolutions in bank.
So noted.
Again, any aldermen that would like to join in a photo with the awardees, please make your way up to the dais
Good morning, members of the board. I am very pleased to be in front of you and part of the special order of business today to recognize a great man. On May 27th, Mr. Tom Gilmore was part of the Greater St. Louis Honor Flight that went to Washington, D.C. Just by quick way of background, the Greater St. Louis Honor Flight program is a 501(c)(3) whose mission is to safely transport America's most senior veterans to Washington, D.C. to view, tour, and to see the memorials that were built in their honor. On May 27th, Judge Kevinney, former state senator, accompanied Mr. Tom Gilmore on that flight, and I would like to recognize his return from that wonderful experience, as I understood, took place on that day and that weekend. And we're gonna be honoring him with a courtesy resolution later today, but I thought it very important to come up here and to say that Tom Gilmore embodies the definition of a Korean War veteran, an American veteran, an American, a St. Louisan, and what it is to be a citizen. I'm very proud and humbled to have him as a constituent in the 16th ward. In many corners of this city, Mr. Tom Gilmore needs no introduction. He's often affectionately referred to as the mayor of Wilmore Road, and he has probably the best block party in the city that he throws on. He's also instrumental and has led for years the Christmas tree lighting, which is a very excellent sort of neighborhood-feely concept that happens down in the 16th ward in Francis Park. Tom is an entrepreneur, and I'm very grateful to be recognizing him here today. I know many aldermen know him, and he has helped them and advised them over the years. And Alderwoman Howard here is also to say a few words.
Good morning, colleagues and all people listening to this. Tom Gilmore is an American hero. He served our country in the Korean War. He has come home, he was a Marine, and he's come home and he served the city of St. Louis. He's a lifelong resident of the city. He loves this city, he is devoted to the city. And as a hero, he has made his mark on the city as well as the nation in his contribution and his heroism during the Korean War. Today, we come together to honor him for his participation in the Honor Flight, and he would like to say a few words about that flight to you. At this time, I would like to introduce Mr. Tom Gilmore.
Indeed, it is an honor. The Honor Flight started about 10 years ago. People ask, "Why didn't it start sooner?" It was something that created by mainly the people right here in the city of St. Louis, one of the first organizers. Very happy to be part of that. Some of the other things that I wanna mention to you is I am the senior commissioner in the Soldiers Memorial. That is truly an honor. All of this is simple. St. Louis is my own place. I'm born and raised here. The only other place I probably been is the Korea and a few other stops. But it's an honor to be here. I'm very familiar with most of the aldermen, and I'm very happy to see the people here that'll take the time to do this, to honor me. I was very privileged to have my guardian as a good friend, Joe Kevinney. Many titles, Senator, beyond that right now. Tell him exactly what you do, Joe. He's the big man in the city right now. He is a judge, and what he does is he's a judge, that compensation judge, which, that's a tough job because you, sometimes the little guy's gotta win once in a while, too. So, I've taken a lot of time with you. I'm extremely proud. The people that I know, they're always good friends. And the aldermen through the years, I've known them. I was thinking while I was sitting here, the first time I was ever in here was the guy I went to school with, Paulie Simon. Another good friend. So, I'm gonna say this, and then I don't wanna keep you any longer. If somebody wants to say something, it'd probably be my good friend Joe Kevinney. He's got so many titles, I just call him Joe. Thank all of you, and I, it is truly an honor to serve the city. I honored Francis Lay, a good friend of mine. He played soccer for me when I was a boy. That's how he got a scholarship to go up to Quincy. Do I like him? Yeah, I like him. After he retired, and I get all these hundreds of letters, he sends me a personal letter, and that means a lot to me. The city, born and raised here. I've seen a lot of changes, and I'm hopeful we'll see a lot more. I think he got a wonderful mayor. I support him. What's left? Just me. I just wanna hang on a little while longer. If you can do anything about that, give me a hand. There is one other person here, too, that I gotta get over here just to, yeah, one of the dear St. Chias, too. Very, very kind to me. The other thing, I don't know if you know this or not, her son was a Marine. He's moving on to bigger things now, if there is such a thing. Thanks, everybody.
I just wanna say one thing. For those of you who are not aware, Tom is too humble to tell you. He is a survivor. He is part of the frozen chosen. And if you look up the Korean War, you'll know what that means. He survived. Thank you for coming back and serving us.
And I am a longtime friend of Tom. I've known him for a long time. And funny story, when I was running for mayor the first time, I called Tom. I said, "Tom, I'd like to have your support in this mayor's race." He said, "I used to, well, President Reed, that's gonna be tough, because I used to coach Francis Lay in high school and soccer and stuff." I said, "Well, you're not coaching him now." And he was, and it was a great conversation. He said, "No, but you know I love you." I said, "I love you, too." He's a good man, and I'm so honored to call him my friend. And he has ran a great business in the city of St. Louis, and we've been very lucky, lucky and blessed to have had Tom for the years we've had him in the city and stand in the city. And please look up, his war record is just amazing. Let's give him one more big round of applause.
I just wanna mention one more thing. State Representative Donna Behringer also drafted a resolution honoring Tom and his Honor Flight, and that will be presented to him today as well. So, thank you, Representative Behringer.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolution. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolution. Caller, all in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. With that, we'll return to our regular order of business. Introduction of honor guests. Any introductions of honor guests. All the one from the nineteenth.
Thank you. He must knew I had a long list. First, I wanted to start off today, making sure that you, I recognize our other guests who came in from out of town. We have people coming from all over the country for Salute to Women, and it is a blessing that we have this kind of support. So thank you for coming in and supporting this initiative and honoring these women tonight. I'd also like to recognize some of our volunteers, because you see, many of the things that we do, we don't always have enough money to do it, but we have a lot of volunteers. And so first, I'd like to recognize Charles Shelton. And see, he wears many hats. Step out so people can see you. Take those glasses off, you know I don't play that. Okay, so, he's a pastor. He's a member of Christ Pilgrim Church. He also works with the St. Louis Clergy Coalition. He has a nonprofit called Teens for Tomorrow. He's out here on the streets, working with young people, bringing them forward, and always there when we need a volunteer. Charles, you don't know how much we appreciate you and all your volunteers that are with you here today. I also would like to recognize a young man who wears many hats as well. You see, if you don't have somebody who has, I can't use that word, but has the strength to tell it like it is and step out front when you need to, you can't get balance. And so I'd like to have my honor guest today, Anthony Shaheed and his daughter. I also would like to recognize, yes. I'd also like to recognize, and I want to ask them to stand, because you know, what do they call it? You have actually jumped. And when I say that, people don't know what you're doing. People complain a lot, and we stand still, but we don't walk towards each other so we can create a better society. So I'd like to ask representatives of the Associated General Contractors, all our construction trade, business managers and assistants, all of you need to stand, because I need to say to you a special thank you on behalf of our communities and how you are creating opportunities, different opportunities, for people to get into the career trades field. And you're going above and beyond. Some of you have never worked together before on a serious level, but I know what you're doing now. Don't be shy. Take your, because you know, it's not often that we say thank you. It's not often we're getting along. So I gotta say thank you. Sheila Jones is here from Amaran. Sheila is a constituent of mine. I said I wanted to say hello to you. Also, Earl Strother from Peric, a former member of Slate and the city of St. Louis. So he's with a company, and he's taking with him the knowledge and the understanding and also his absolute belief, because he's a pastor, too, of what should be done and how it should be done right. So I thank you for what you do on behalf of our citizens here in St. Louis. And last but not least, I need to ask the Urban League staff that is working overtime on this Salute to Women to please stand. And let me say thank you on behalf of your president, Michael McMillan. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I've ended my list.
All right, excellent. Alderman from the seventh.
President, members of the board, I believe our colleague from the nineteenth covered most of my special guests. I would like to recognize my state rep, Representative Bruce Franks Jr., is here with us today. Thank you.
Oh, welcome, Bruce. All the one from the fourteenth.
Today, I'd like to have as my honored guests, Mr. James Sonderman from the Water Department, Mr. Steve Butts from Crawford Butts Insurance Company, also my insurance man, and Demetrius Alfred from Firefighters Local 73, and Judge Joe Keviny.
Alderman from the third.
Good morning, Mr. President. How's everybody doing today?
Good.
I'd like to introduce my special guest, Anthony Shaheed and his daughters, Antonika and Latifa Shaheed, and Mr. Lou Hamilton.
Alderman from the sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to recognize as my special guest, to stay as long as he would want, Mr. Tom Gilmore, and State Representative Donna Behringer. Thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have Mr. Leroy Grant with AT&amp;T, and Martina Johnson with St. Louis Village Association as my honor guest.
Alderman from the fifteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to welcome as my special guest today, the folks up in the balcony from Moore and Citizen Artists STL. I also hope that all of us can have the alderman from the 21st ward as our special guest today in honor of his birthday.
All right, he's too young. Alderman from the 23rd.
Members of the board, I'd like to have Fred Cersei from the Plumbers and Pipefitters as my special guest.
Alderman from the 21st, the youngest man on the boardroom in the history of the city.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. For my special guest, I'd like to, along with the alderman from the 19th ward and Alderman from the third, welcome to the Board of Aldermen, the activist and agitator, Brother Anthony Shaheed and his lovely daughters, Antonika and Latifa Shaheed, as well as Mrs. Sean Filling from the St. Louis Record Center, and also Mr. Percy Green III, the Vice President of the Black Firefighters Union.
Alderman from the 20th.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to have as my honored guest today, Mr. Leonard Johnson of the Treasurer's Office, with whom I've been working to create that list of alternatives to payday loans that we passed here at the board last year. And additionally, Mr. William Humphries, who's with the Boy Scouts of South St. Louis. For any South St. Louis representative, if you'd like to increase Boy Scouting in your ward, talk to Mr. Humphrey after the meeting today. Thank you so much.
Alderman from the 12th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to introduce as my special guest today Keith Taylor and Jeffrey Hines from the Carpenters Union, and also Alfred Demetrius, I don't know if he was mentioned, President of Firefighters Local 73.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Also, would like to welcome my brother and friend, Anthony Shaheed and Antonika Shaheed. Thank you all for the work that you do throughout our community. Let's give them one very big round of applause. Also, Mr. Butts, I thought that was you earlier. I said, I'm pretty sure that was him. So welcome to the board this morning. Alderman from the 10th, like to wrap up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. As we gather here on June 9th, in this day in 1973, Secretariat won the Triple Crown. And on this day, more importantly, Donald Duck made his premiere as the premier actor in 1934. Jackie Wilson was born in 1934, on the same year, and on this day in 1970, Band of Gold was going into the top 10 out of the top 100. Just look that up. Miss Frida Payne's big hit. Thank you, Frida.
Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on approval at the minutes.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the minutes of the May 12th, 19th, 25th, and June 2nd minutes be approved.
Move by the Alderman from the 18th, second by the Alderman from the 19th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Report to city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all aldermen's mailboxes. I have from his honor, her honor, the mayor, the following correspondence. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Deferred Compensation Committee. The appointment of Mr. James Sonderman, who resides in the 23rd ward. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment. Sincerely, Lyda Cruz, Mayor, City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the 23rd, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Deferred Compensation Committee.
I approve, I'm approved. I ask for the, the mayor's, I move for the nomination of the mayor, of the mayor's nomination of Jim Sonderman.
Then move by the Alderman from the 23rd, second by the Alderman from the 13th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
That's the extent of report of city officials.
We have dispensed with line items seven through 10. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill 49, sponsored by Alderman Davis and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan for 3904 Folsom. Board Bill 50, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute upon receipt of and in consideration a sum of $1 other good and valuable consideration, a quick claim deed to remind release and forever quick claim to McGrath Associates, certain city-owned property located at 1920 South Kings Highway Boulevard. Board Bill 51, sponsored by Alderman Davis and ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission. The Board of Public Service and the Board of Estment and Apportionment establishing and authorizing the Public Works and Improvement Program, Airfield Building Environments Program at St. Louis Lambert International Airport, consisting of capital improvement projects for and to the terminal complexes, concourses, parking facilities, taxiways, runways, associated airport structures and facilities and environments, authorizing an initial appropriation in a total amount of $2,364,396 from the Airport Development Fund and containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill 52, sponsored by Alderman Spencer and Alderman Ingracia, and ordinance pertaining to the animal code, repealing Section 2 of Ordinance 62941, repealing Section 5 of Ordinance 62853, repealing Section 1 of Ordinance 68463 pertaining to the prohibition of keeping certain animals, repealing Section 8 of Ordinance 62853, repealing Section 4 of Ordinance 47883, repealing Section 1 of Ordinance 47883, and repealing Ordinance 42333 codified of the revised code pertaining to the appointment of a veterinary surgeon and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 53, sponsored by Alderman Howard and ordinance directing the Department of Public Safety starting in 2018 to move the City of St. Louis National Night Out from the first Tuesday of August to the first Tuesday of October. Board Bill 54, sponsored by Alderman Volmer and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment authorizing the city to issue its taxable industrial development revenue bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $20,200,000 for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of acquiring, constructing, equipping, and improving an industrial development project in the city. Board Bill 55, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordinance pertaining to the transit sales tax imposed as adopted and approved by the voters on August 2nd, 1994 pursuant to ordinance creating the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund directing the treasurer to deposit received pursuant to the said sales tax into the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund Account 1 from the sales tax for the period herein stated to the Bi-State Development Agency for certain purposes, providing for the payment of such funds during the period of July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018 and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 56, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordinance pertaining to the transit sales tax imposed pursuant as adopted and approved by the voters on November 4th, 1997 pursuant to Ordinance 64111, creating the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund, directing the treasurer of the city to deposit funds received pursuant to said sales tax into the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund Account 2. From said sales tax for the period herein stated to the Bi-State Development Agency for certain purposes, providing for the payment of such funds during the period of July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018 and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 57, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordinance appropriating the sum of $21,877,000 as described and defined in Section 94.600, as amended for the period herein stated, which sum is hereby appropriated out of the Transportation Trust Fund to the Bi-State Development Agency for transportation purposes, and further providing that the appropriation is conditional upon the Bi-State Development Agency supplying the Board of Estment and Apportionment and Annual Evaluation Report, further providing that in no event shall the comptroller draw warrants on the treasurer for an amount greater than the amount of proceeds deposited in the Transportation Trust Fund and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 58, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordinance pertaining to payroll expense tax, repealing subject to, repealing and subject to voter approval those exemptions from this tax in Section 9 of Ordinance 60737 for religious and charitable organizations and institutions, not-for-profit civil, civic social service or fraternal organizations, not-for-profit hospitals, and not-for-profit educational institutions that employ more than 20 employees. Submitting to the qualified voters to question whether the exemptions to the payroll expense tax for religious and charitable organizations and institutions, not-for-profit social, civic, social service or fraternal organizations, not-for-profit hospitals, and not-for-profit educational institutions that employ more than 20 employees shall be repealed and a payroll expense tax of one-half of 1% imposed with an emergency clause. Board Bill 59, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordinance relating to solid waste service fee established under Ordinance 68698, authorizing an increase to said fee of $3 per month per dwelling use unit commencing with the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017 and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 60, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordinance relating to public safety, imposing under and by the authority and subject to the approval of the voters a one-half of 1% sales tax on all retail sales made in the city of St. Louis, which are subject to taxation under the provisions of the section solely for the purpose of providing revenues for operation of the Department of Public Safety, including the police, the fire divisions, in addition to any and all sales taxes allowed by law. Submitting to the qualified voters of the city of St. Louis a proposal to impose such tax, providing for an election and the manner of voting thereat, providing that if such questions shall receive the vote, receive the votes of a majority of the voters voting thereon, that such tax shall be authorized and in effect as provided and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 61, sponsored by Alderman Green, Alderman Tyus, Alderman Gunther, and Alderman Williamson, and ordinance to require the provisions of community benefits and executed community benefits agreements for certain development projects seeking public support for investments above the certain threshold levels, including certain exemptions, providing for penalties and provisions, enforcement and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of our first reading.
Reference to committee.
To the Housing Committee, Board Bill 54 and 61, to the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bill 49, to the Streets Committee, Board Bill 59, to the Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill 51, to the Health and Human Services Committee, Board Bill 52, to the Public Safety Committee, Board Bill 53, and to the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bills 50, 55, 56, 57, 57, 58, and 60. That's the extent of reference to committees.
All right. Madam Clerk, one correction on first reading, calendar of Board Bill 54. I think it was stated, one, two, three, the fifth line down where it says $20,700,000. I think it was stated $20,200,000. So make that correction. It's $20,700,000.
So noted.
All right. Would you like to read the preamble for 54, just so that we can have it?
Yes. Board Bill 54, sponsored by Alderman Volmer and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment authorizing the city to issue its taxable industrial development revenue bonds, Series 2017, in a principal amount not to exceed $20,700,000 for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of acquiring, constructing, equipping, and improving an industrial development project in the city.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Second reading.
Following board bill was reported out of Streets Committee, Board Bill 39, sponsored by Alderman Jeffrey Boyd and ordinance recommended by the Parking Commission making appropriation for payment of the operating expenses, capital equipment and improvement expenses, including lease purchase agreement involving the Parking Division asset and debt services expenses of the Parking Division of the Treasurer's Office, Keel and City Hall Parking Facilities. Parking Facilities, Informational Technologies Office, Arkout Parking Facility, Shoto Building and Parking Facility, Williams Paper Parking Facility, Central Downtown Parking Facility, Buckingham Parking Facilities, Couples Parking Facility, Justice City Parking Facility for the fiscal year beginning July the first two thousand and seventeen and ending June the thirtieth two thousand and eighteen, amounting in aggregate to the sum of fifteen million five hundred and forty-six thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars and containing an emergency clause. The following board bill was reported out of the Legislation Committee, Board Bill Thirty-Five, Committee Substitute As amended, sponsored by Alderman Vacaro, Kennedy, Boyd, and Alderman Murphy, and Ordinance protecting victims of automobile theft from paying, storing, towing, and administrative fees directly related to recovery of a stolen automobile by amending ordinance six-four-six-six-eight, approved June eleventh nineteen ninety-nine and containing a severability clause. That's the extent of our second reading.
Alderman from the nineteenth.
Mr. President, I would like to ask that my name be added to Board Bill Thirty-Five, Committee Substitute.
Please make note of that change.
So noted.
And please add my name to the bid also.
So noted.
All right. Dispense with line item fourteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill Nineteen, sponsored by Alderman Davis and Ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for thirty-eight twenty-seven Shaw. Board Bill Twenty, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and Ordinance approving redevelopment plan for thirteen oh one through oh three South Boyle. Board Bill Twenty-Two, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and Ordinance approving redevelopment plan for forty-four oh one Gibson. Board Bill Twenty-Three, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and Ordinance approving redevelopment plan for forty-four forty-three Oakland. Board Bill Forty-One, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia and Ordinance approving redevelopment plan for twenty-six oh seven California. Board Bill Forty-Two, sponsored by Alderman Vacaro and Ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Streets to permanently close barricade or otherwise impede the flow of traffic on Mardel and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for approval of the perfection consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the eighteenth, second by Alderman from the twenty-seventh. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We will dispense with line item sixteen, third reading consent.
Board Bills Ten, Four, Five, Committee Substitute, Six, Seven, and Eight.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on motion for third reading consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the third reading consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the eighteenth, second by Alderman from the first. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderman Flowers.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Ingracia.
Aye.
Alderman Kotar.
Aye.
Alderman Conway.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Valmer.
Aye.
Alderman Martin. Alderman Honowitz.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro.
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Twenty-five aye votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the eighteenth and third read, and finally pass the aforementioned bills. We will dispense with line item eighteen, report of enrollment.
Board Bills Ten, Four, Five, Committee Substitute, Six, Seven, and Eight.
All other business being suspended, the President shall in open session fix his signature here to today and that these may become law.
Resolution Thirty-Five, sponsored by President Reed, Alderman Green, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Kotar, and Alderman Vacaro, the Board of Alderman recognizes the Paris Climate Agreement and commit to upholding the guidelines of the agreement throughout the city.
Alderman from the eighteenth, or Alderman from twenty, whoever would like to take it can take. Alderman from the eighteenth.
Mr. President, members of the board, I request unanimous consent.
Hearing no objection, please proceed on.
I would move for adoption of Resolution Thirty-Five.
It's been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the ninth, any discussion, and the twentieth. Alderman from the twentieth, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, I commend your resolution here to stand with the Paris Climate Agreement. I'd like you to add my name as a cosponsor.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Would you like to move to have the resolution in bank?
I'd like to move that we put this resolution in bank.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twentieth, seconded by Alderman from the thirteenth. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Alderman. Oh, thank you, thank you, Alderman. Hey, Alderman from the first, would you like to talk about the importance of climate change?
Resolution Thirty-Six, sponsored by Alderman Hubbard, Enterprise Zone for twelve-twenty Saint Charles LLC.
Also, it's been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the ninth, that we adopt Resolution Number Thirty-Six. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note the fact that Resolution Number, excuse me, Thirty-Five is in bank.
So noted.
Resolution Number Thirty-Six.
Resolution Thirty-Six, sponsored by Alderman Hubbard, Enterprise Zone for twelve-twenty Saint Charles LLC.
Alderman from the fifth. You recognize on first reading of Resolution Number Thirty-Six.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I would like to move for Resolution Number Thirty-Six to be moved to the HUDS committee.
It's been moved by Alderman from the fifth, entertained second, seconded by Alderman from the eighteenth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign Resolution Thirty-Six to HUDS.
So noted. Resolution Fifty-Three, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, the Board of Alderman directs the Public Safety Committee to hold public hearings at least every other month with the necessary city officials to review and get updates on the implementation of the peer plan.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on first reading of Resolution Number Fifty-Three.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to assign Resolution Fifty-Three to the Public Safety Committee.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, entertained second motion, seconded by Alderman from the twentieth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign Resolution Number Fifty-Three to Public Safety.
So noted. Resolution Fifty-Five, sponsored by Alderman Valmer, the Board of Alderman hereby authorizes the provision of a project exemption certificate in connection with the plan for the industrial development of Hep Pharma.
Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on first reading of Resolution Number Fifty-Five.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. That's Puvafarma.
Who I request we send the resolution to HUDS committee.
It's been moved by Alderman from the tenth, entertained second on that motion, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, madam clerk, please assign Resolution Fifty-Five to HUDS.
So noted. Resolution Sixty, sponsored by Alderman Spencer, to amend said rules of the Board of Alderman for the two thousand seventeen through two thousand and eighteen session, Article Three, Rule Eleven, Amendment Number One.
Alderman from the twentieth, you recognize on first reading of Resolution Number Sixty.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. This resolution just specifies when board bills and resolutions will be posted online, and I'd like to move that we assign this to the Rules Committee.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twentieth, seconded by Alderman from the eighteenth, that we send Resolution Number Sixty to Rules. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign Resolution Sixty to Rules.
So noted. Resolution Sixty-One, sponsored by Alderman Spencer, the Board of Alderman amends said rules of the Board of Alderman for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand and eighteen session, Article Ten, Rule Fifty-Five, on page twenty-one, Amendment Number Two.
Alderman from the twentieth, you recognize on the first read on the Resolution Number Sixty-One.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. This rule addresses the time at which Aldermen are required to have a bill prepared.
Please state your point of order.
You're not allowed to discuss any portion of the bill. All she can do is ask to send that to committee.
On resolutions, it does allow, our rules allow us to just make a quick statement, but you have to make a, just a very brief statement, you can't go on about the resolution. Just tell us what it is.
What this, thank you, Mr. President, my esteemed colleague from the Eighth Ward. What this bill does is it specifies at what time Aldermen need to have a bill prepared for the clerk in order for it to be introduced at the Board of Aldermen at our regularly scheduled meeting, and I'd like to move that we assign this bill to the Rules Committee.
Been moved by Alderman from the twentieth, entertained second on that motion.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman from the sixth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Please assign Resolution Sixty-Two to Rules.
Sixty, so noted. Resolution Sixty-Two, sponsored by Alderman Spencer, the Board of Alderman amends said rules of the Board of Alderman for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand and eighteen session, Article Eleven, Rule Number Seventy-Five, on page twenty-five, Amendment Number Three.
Alderman from the twentieth, you recognize on first reading of Resolution Sixty-Two.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. What this resolution does is again specifies the time at which we need to have a bill prepared. Excuse me, this is related to resolutions. There is a discrepancy currently in our rules related to when we have to have board bills and resolutions prepared. This aligns those two and provides some guidance to us, and I'd like to move that we assign this resolution to the Rules Committee.
Move by Alderman from the twentieth, seconded by Alderman from the eighteenth. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign Resolution Sixty-Two to Rules. And in my previous statement, I said sign Sixty-Two, but I meant Sixty-One to Rules. So we have Sixty, Sixty-One, and Sixty-Two in Rules.
So noted. Resolution Number Sixty-Three, sponsored by Alderman Spencer, the Board of Alderman amends said rules of the Board of Alderman for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand and eighteen session, Article Fifteen, Rule Number Ninety-Two, on page thirty, Amendment Number Four.
Alderman from the twentieth, you recognize on first reading of Resolution Number Sixty-Three.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to move that we assign amendment, excuse me, Resolution Number Sixty-Three to the Rules Committee.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twentieth, seconded by Alderman from the eighteenth. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, assign Resolution Number Sixty-Three to Rules.
So noted. That is the extent of our first reading of resolution.
Miss Lane, it's unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
On Tuesday, June the thirteenth, Public Safety Committee meeting at ten a.m. in the Kennedy Room. On Friday, full board meeting, ten a.m. in the chambers, and that's June the sixteenth, Friday, June the sixteenth, full board meeting, ten a.m. in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcements.
Alderman from the tenth, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. This Sunday, Sunday, June eleventh, on the Hill, will be the annual Soapbox Derby. They start around eight-thirty in the morning and run to around five or six. The winners will be going to Ohio for the finals. They have an antique car show, live music, food, beverages, and, I believe, at one o'clock, the Fire Chief and Police Chief have their annual race. Thank you.
All right. Any further announcements? Alderman from the twenty-seventh.
Thank you, President. I wanted to announce the Twenty-Seventh Ward will have their town hall meeting on June the thirteenth, and it's to focus on a plan within the Twenty-Seventh Ward, and we have invited the Alderman for the Second Ward to have her residents participate in it also.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the eighth.
And again, Mr. President, I would just invite anyone who would like to support raising the salaries for the police officers and more money for public safety, that Board Bill Fifty-Eight and Board Bill Sixty, we will take cosponsors today, if you would like, to add your name to those bills, and you can let Donna know.
Point order.
Alderman from the second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Tomorrow, June tenth, from eleven to four p.m., at the Mary Meacham site on the North River Front Trail at Prairie, at the Flood Wall, we will be having our fifteenth annual Mary Meacham celebration. We know about this particular location, it's the only underground recognized site in the region because of Shaw's records. Shaw had a slave named Esther, and Esther tried to escape to her freedom to Illinois back in eighteen hundreds, and she, when she got to Illinois, an abolitionist was killed. She was returned back to Shaw, her children were sold and were departed from her mother. Tomorrow, we're celebrating from eighteen ninety-seven that the colored Twenty-Fifth Infantry, also known as the Buffalo Soldiers, were deployed to travel from Fort, this is incorrect, from Montana to Jefferson Barracks, which was nineteen hundred miles on their bicycles, mainly along railroad tracks. It took forty-one days and a lot of grit, so there's gonna be a reenactment. We actually have some actual bike that was in the History Museum about a couple months ago, but there are gonna be reenactments of this bicycle brigade that's gonna be traveling. It's a fantastic event. You really, when you get there, you feel like you're still in the eighteen hundreds. The site probably looks exactly like it did back in the eighteen hundreds. It's just some steps that go down to the river that Mary Meacham, the wife of Reverend Meacham, Pastor Meacham, used to facilitate getting slaves to freedom in Illinois. So I invite you out. I'll be at the event tomorrow from eleven to one. It's free, just come Hall Street to Prairie, down to the underground, to the Flood Wall, and we'll get you from there to the actual site. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the third.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. As you all know, we have a lot of problems in our city right now with crime and issues that we're all trying to work together to solve. We have a Crime Prevention Summit this Saturday at the O'Fallon Rec Center, so we're asking everybody to come out from nine a.m. to twelve p.m. at the O'Fallon Park Rec Center, that's forty-three forty-three West Florence, so we can talk about crime. It's gonna be an interesting summer, so we all gotta work together to keep it less interesting. Thank you.
Alderman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to acknowledge that on Tuesday, June thirteenth, the HUDS committee will have a public meeting, and our topics of discussion is understanding our processes and getting public opinion and concerns on tax abatement and TIFs and economic development for the city of Saint Louis. That meeting will be held at the Harris That meeting will be held at the Harrison Center, thirty-one hundred CAS, that, that's the Community College Campus directly across the street from Vashon High School. Doors open at six p.m., meeting starts at six-thirty p.m. I encourage all to come out. It's really critical that you educate the public appropriately so and not just simply have words thrown out without facts and understanding of process and procedure, and also getting some opinions on how we move forward in the future. So I ask all citizens to come out and gather factual information. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the second.
I'm sorry, I failed to mention that this past Sunday, June fourth, our, one of our staff, Secretary Tracy Billups just had a birthday, and that our Alderman from the seventeenth ward is going to be celebrating a birthday Tuesday the thirteenth, and our Alderwoman from the nineteenth ward will be celebrating a birthday on June the fourteenth.
Oh, wow.
So we'll be in hearing maybe that day, but just happy birthday. I hope your week and your weekend is good.
Good. Let's give them a round of applause. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the eighteen, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
All of them are twenty-nine again. Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the Alderman from the fourth, eleventh, and twenty-fifth be excused for necessary absence.
Move by Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the tenth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Alderman from the eighteen, you recognize on motion adjourned.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the board adjourns until Friday, June sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, ten a.m.
Move by Alderman from the eighteenth, and seconded by Alderman from the tenth. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Stand adjourned.